Okay, you ready, Rose?
Yeah.
Meeting is called to order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon is absent today. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
This morning, I asked that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, both locally as well as globally. Also asked that we remember all those who've lost loved ones in our community since the last time we were in these chambers. And finally, I do ask that our God and Creator give us the wisdom and the best information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes and bills from the City Council meeting of Wednesday, April 19th, 2017, and bills for payment on April 28th and May 5th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Kwiatowski.
A reminder, we're going to have two presentations before citizens be heard. And I believe we have, at 9:30, we have two public hearings, so we will suspend the citizens be heard at that time until after the public hearings. Jim, you want to take over?
Sure. Did all the Villa Maria girls come up and their coaches?
Hi. Just pick somebody and they can hand them out when they leave the stage.
We need a microphone if everybody can hear us. Matt was supposed to do the presentation this morning for the team after their great season. When driving down here thinking, oh, yeah, that's right, I'm supposed to give this presentation this morning, and I look good, and we got some Villa Blue on, so I feel better. On behalf of the City Council, we'd like to congratulate you on your season, give you the certificate on behalf of the council members and for the great season and if it would pass, he's out. My teammates and team players, I don't know, these might go to the coaches. I got stuck in this at the last fifth, but it's great.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
His honor, the mayor's here, too.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I guess Mayor Donfus also would like to thank you with a certificate of 12. The mayor's here himself.
I just wanted to thank council for inviting me down to also congratulate all of you on a great season. You've done Erie proud, you've done yourselves proud. Nice to see you, great athletes and great students in the office community. So we also have part of each of you.
Hey, Jim, do we want to have a spokesman?
Excuse me? Hey, who is the team captain or senior or who would like to talk?
Where's the team captain? That's a good one.
There you go.
Well, I would just like to thank everyone and congrats to Strong Vincent, too. You guys had a great season. And I'm going to miss all my players and thank you to everyone in our community who supported us throughout our whole season and these past few years, too. So just thank you.
Same as Julia, thank you for the recognition. It was amazing getting all the support we got this year. It was great also having Strong Vincent come and just seeing all the support from Erie and us supporting them and them supporting us. That was fun to see the support come from our hometown. So thank you again for the recognition. We appreciate it and we love where we come from.
Anybody else lose a coach out?
Well, you know, in this day and age, if it's not on Instagram, it didn't happen. So I had to make sure I get a picture for all of the girls, right? But no, congratulations, Shannon. I've known Shannon Poeyum a long time. What a great, wonderful season, so much fun to watch the Strong Vincent boys throughout the year. His daughter, actually, we tied in, Amisha, played for us at Villa Maria Academy. It was one of her groups that probably started these traditions. What a wonderful year. We really enjoyed all the community, the support. It's kind of neat to see again with the social media, with all the different teams throughout the area, how Erie always comes together, whether you're having a good season or whether you're having an average season. Come playoff time, everybody competes and cheers for each other. So I want to thank our seniors especially, Julia Casella, Autumn Byes, Andrew McCormick, who's not here. They really did a great, wonderful job leading the team. And I'd be remiss to say, if we didn't remind everybody, we played this season with heavy hearts. We lost a couple of family members, you know, Autumn and Sidney, both lost some close family members. And it was a difficult year, but with what the girls did, I think the biggest accomplishment was getting those two through a really difficult time, so that's probably what I'm most proud of. So thank you to City Council, thank you to Mayor Senate for having us here, we really appreciate it, and thank you.
Yeah, right. It's like City Controller.
Congratulations.
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 Everybody.
Congratulations.
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 Great job.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations. How are you?
I am.
Congratulations.
Our next presentation will be by Councilman Curtis Jones and the mayor, Mayor Joe Sinnet.
I will use the mic. I'm a little bit more prepared than Mr. Winarski. I've had a while to... It's my honor to stand here today as a councilman, but also as a member of the Erie community. We see these young ladies from Villa and the work you put in and the challenges you overcame to be successful, the challenges these young men as scholar athletes at Strong Vincent put in to be successful. Whether you walk away with the biggest trophy or you walk away with the success that you, the intrinsic value of success or the internal value of success, you're winning. There's an, I won't be over talkative about it, but I want to take a moment to say, there's an old Native American adage, and there's an old man, old native chief grandfather-type figure, and a young native boy, Native American boy, and they're having this conversation. And the old man begins to tell the young boy about a story of two wolves, and you may have heard this before. Tells the story of two wolves. One is negativity and hatred and anger and bitterness and frustration and overwhelming, being overwhelmed by circumstances. The other one is love, joy, peace, and harmony and trying to figure out how to make things work even when they don't seem to be working. And the little boy says to the grandfather, to the older man, which, and those two wolves are warring and fighting, they're going at each other. And the boy asked the old man, he said, "Which wolf is going to win this war and win this battle?" And he said, "The one that you feed." And so today, we want to feed the positive energy of community today. We hear enough about who came from somewhere hiding in Erie, who shot this and who shot the sheriff but not the deputy, and we hear all of that stuff. But we don't often hear enough and tell the story of the greatness of our young people in this community. And so today, this is us feeding and giving life to this positive wolf, because that's who we want to be successful. That's what we want our community to be full of, is the life and the energy and the success that we see with these young people today. So with that said, I want to ask Coach Poeyum and his staff, as well as these wonderful young men from Strong Vincent, to come up to the stage with me at this time. Just in case, right? It's great seeing these guys come up here. Some of, most of them I've known since they, well, before they were even here. And now I got to get up front because they're all taller than me. This is ridiculous. Many of these young men, as I said, I've known either most of their life, or come on up here, fellas, or all their lives, or I know their parents, or they live across the street from me, and some of them I'd have crossed over on the court myself, and we won't get into that, Mr. Jones. But you all have really, really represented Erie. You are ambassadors in this community. And I want to just put this out there, don't just do it on the court, the Strong Vincent court. You didn't just do it on the Strong Vincent court, you've done it in the community as a whole. Because I see all of you, y'all know, I see all of you all the time, and you're always stellar young men, and you represent us well. And so what I have today is I have a series of resolutions. I won't read all of them, because we do have a lot of business to do today, and there's a lot of them, but I do want to give Coach Poeyum an opportunity to speak, and then you can have any of your captains or any of your young men from the team can say some kind of words. All right, I'll just hold the mic out here, whoever come get it, Mr. Jones.
I just want to say thank you to everybody in the community for following us throughout all our years and following us through the state run and everything else. And big congrats to Villa for also doing the same thing that we accomplished, and just thank you for everybody in the community.
Y'all, just want to say, big congrats to Villa. It was definitely an honor to be on this road with y'all. And I just want to say thank you to City Council and everybody, to Mayor, and thank you to the Erie community for being with us during this journey. Thank you.
I have something. You want to say something, Coach?
You have a platform.
Want to say thanks to the community, I want to say thanks to the administration, Strong Vincent. Want to say thanks to Coach Laird and, what's your name? No, Coach Chuzi, for taking my daughter and not just my daughter, but my assistant coach, David Morris, under the wings and showing them the right path. Dave is not here, we would like for everybody to give him, you know, some prayer. He had hip surgery and he's recovering in the hospital. He's been with me for 15, no, 16 out of my 18 years, and you're only as good as your staff, and I felt like I had a great staff. But I would also like to thank these young men for the hard work and dedication and the sacrifices that they made, not just on the court, but in life itself. And also thank you to City Council, you know, for honoring this team and the community for coming behind us and showing us the support that they did this year. Thanks again, Coach Poeyum. So what we have, before we bring the mayor up, we have something we want to have for each of the players, so I will give these, I'll leave these here, and when you guys leave the stage, I'll just hand them to you all together. Also, we have several proclamations for the school to put in the archives, et cetera. You don't know, you know, the community is changing so much, and this, if this is the last Strong Vincent Boys basketball team, man, y'all did it right. Y'all did it right. Really quickly, because there, again, the potential for this being historic on a lot of different levels, we want to take a moment to honor, we've honored all of these young men, and again, we have certificates for each of you. I want to take a moment to honor a young man in particular who just did some extra things, right? And did some extraordinary things. And I will say this as an athlete, knowing that it takes, you know, get five people on the floor at a time. If the other four people that were on the floor with this young man weren't doing their thing, he would not be where he is, and I know he recognizes that as well. But David Morris, Jr., young man that I've known really is all his life. His father is like, you know, my big brother, he's like an old head for me, and I appreciate him for that. But I watched you since elementary school on the court. And more than that, I watched you in church, I watched you in community, and I watched you be a stellar young man, and the best is truly yet to come for you, as well as the rest of these young men on stage with you. I want to, I do have a special proclamation and certificate of achievement and appreciation for you. All-time leading scorer in Erie County history with a monumental total of 2,270 points. Fourth-leading scorer overall in District 10, Region 6 Player of the Year, three-time All-State, David Morris, Jr. Come up and receive this as well. And finally, talk about knowing someone all your life and an example of success. We want to recognize Coach Shannon Poeyum, who has literally coached hundreds and hundreds of young men, and we saw a lot of them come back this season to be part of the fraternity. Never played for Vincent, I was a Mercy Harris prep boy. We got, we got beat by Vincent sometime. But Coach Poeyum, you've invested in, through many dangers, toils, snares, difficulties, you've invested yourself and your time and your heart and your passion and your love for a gift, end gift of basketball into the men of this community. And not just Strong Vincent players, my son's played for you in summer leagues and things of that nature. You've invested more than you probably know. And so with that said, I have a certificate of appreciation for you. Strong Vincent head coach Shannon Poeyum, for the winningest coach in Erie Public School history, and outstanding service and mentoring to the youth of Erie, Pennsylvania. Again, not just the young men that played for you, but the young men and women who walked through the halls of Strong Vincent, who walked through the neighborhoods of Erie community. You've been a mentor and an example, so thank you for that, and we want to celebrate you as well. With all that said, now we want to have the Honorable Mayor of the city of Erie, Mayor Joe Sinnet, to come at this time.
Thank you, Curtis. I certainly echo everything that Councilman Jones and Coach Poeyum said. You guys have really, again, honored yourselves in this community. I followed your season closely this year and you're champions. If you, when, out in the community, if you heard the way that the community, and this you may not know, how much the community followed your season and the buzz that was in this community about you guys, you inspired the community in a way that I haven't seen in a long time. So you should be very proud, not only of your accomplishments on the court, but also what you've done to inspire the people of this city. It's been a great year for you, you should be very proud. Coaches, congratulations, you made these gentlemen champions, not only on the court but in life, and you're definitely an honor to this town. David, I followed your career specifically because when I was a young man, your dad, Motown, was the basketball hero in this community, but you have certainly carried that legacy well. So congratulations to you also. But congratulations, gentlemen, and good luck in everything that you do. Coach, coaches, congratulations. And we too have proclamations that we'll give each of you and for the coaches and the school as well as you leave, so I'll get those to you. Thanks, Curtis.
Shake your hands.
Absolutely.
As Coach Poeyum said, the administration, the parents of Villa girls, young ladies, and the Strong Vincent men, thank you for what you've done, because you all had to pay for bus tickets and games and all that. Mrs. Prater, you are a stellar administrator in the Erie School District, thank you for all of your service as well. Gentlemen, if you would, we start that way and go around and shake the hands of the council member and the city treasurer, excuse me, comptroller as well, who would like to celebrate you.
We'd like to thank the mayor for his presence today. Thank you, Joe. Rose, do we have time for one speaker?
No.
Pardon?
No, I don't.
Okay. No problem.
That was my first ruby-like experience. I'm like, what's in the world?
Okay, we're going to suspend citizens be heard, and we're going to go to the public while we, one of our first of two public hearings.
Okay, the first public hearing will be for the urban garden, and the second will be for the waterfront conditional use.
Okay, if the interested parties would step up and talk about the project. Mr. Puzz, go ahead.
Good morning, Council President and City Members of Council. My name's Matt Puzz, I'm the Secretary to the Planning Commission. I'm here to talk about the urban agriculture amendment. The current amendment, the targeted area would be the, and the areas, the names I'm using are from the comprehensive plan. We have the West Bay Front, East Bay Front, Little Italy, Trinity Park, and Pulaski Lighthouse areas. And the reason these areas were targeted for the amendment is as follows. According to Erie Refocus, the Erie City Comprehensive Plan, the areas of East Bay Front and Trinity Park are considered highly distressed, where 78% of the housing stock is under moderate or severe distress. The areas of West Bay Front, Little Italy, and Pulaski Lighthouse are considered distressed, where 60% of the housing stock are under moderate or severe distress. It is estimated that there are 4,700 vacant housing units with 1,900 abandoned housing units and 9,500 residential properties with signs of moderate to severe distress. The vacancy rate of the East Bay Front and Trinity Park planning areas is 19%, while the vacancy rate for West Bay Front, Little Italy, and Pulaski Lighthouse planning areas is 13%. The citywide vacancy rate is 10%. The implication of these statistics is that the bulk of the 4,700 vacant units and 1,900 abandoned housing units in the city are located in these planning areas. To further impress upon the current housing conditions in these planning areas, 47% of the residential properties in the East Bay Front and Trinity Park planning areas and 22% of the residential properties in the West Bay Front, Little Italy, and Pulaski Lighthouse planning areas have code violations. Citywide, 14% of the residential properties have code violations. One of the recommendations made in Erie Refocus is to use targeted demolition of blighted structures to stabilize the housing markets in these areas. Once the blighted housing stock is removed, the question to ask is what is an appropriate use for the vacant property? Erie Refocus recommends a network of parks or having clean and green vacant lots, returning to functional use whenever possible. This includes repurposing of vacant lots for urban agriculture. According to the zoning ordinance for the city of Erie, urban agriculture falls under the definition of light manufacturing. This combines urban agriculture to the C3, M1, M2, the IP, the WC3, and WM zoning districts. The planning areas noted above fall primarily into the R2, R3, and RLB districts. There are isolated pockets of C1, R1, R1A, C2, M1, and M2 in these districts. The districts of R2, R3, and RLB by their very nature encourage high density. However, with the current overabundance in housing stock, urban agriculture would present a viable option for vacant lots under the house, until the housing market stabilizes in the city of Erie, specifically in these areas. By allowing urban agriculture as defined in the R2, R3, and RLB districts, an attractive alternative to vacant land will be available. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
Mr. Puzz, in that Pulaski Lighthouse area, does that include the Hammer Mill property? I can't remember, I can't recall.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Hammer Mills in the Lakeside Planning Area.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
A quick question, also, Mr. Puzz, the Trinity Park area, what's that particular area again?
Trinity Park would be on the east side, it's kind of analogous to Little Italy on the west side. So you have Little Italy, and then you cross state to the Trinity Park.
Okay, okay. Booker T. Washington Center is in that area, along that strip. Okay, question, and I do understand the rationale of why the areas you chose are mentioned. There's that piece that I think they call the donut hole, right, in the whole strategy plan, that east side, that lower east side area that is not best in, between, I guess, best in Trinity, that gap in there?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason why that area, because that's probably as dense or, unless I didn't hear it, is dense and issue with, you know, blight and underutilized property as anywhere else?
Well, that area should be included as well with the urban agriculture amendment.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that area was included, I didn't want to hop over it and, again, it needs just as much work. Can you speak a little bit to process as far as, so if we are talking about actual agricultural and produce being developed on these properties, who would facilitate that? I don't know if we've gotten that far in the conversation, but who would facilitate that? Would be, would be contract people to come in and have areas, are they going to be businesses? Or where the proceeds of the produce is going to be for profit, those types of things? Can you speak to some of that?
It would be a private endeavor.
And it could be multiple private entities?
Correct.
Multiple areas?
Correct.
Okay. And so how does the city, besides the, again, the intrinsic value of improved space and better-looking space, are we, so we're charging these private, and they'll buy it from the city? Or is it, what's that interaction with the city and those private entities?
Not necessarily. The lots would be, could be purchased from the redevelopment authority, but if somebody would have a vacant lot that they already own, then they would be able to use that property for urban agriculture.
Okay. But for those that are, because in our initial conversation, we, there were some areas that were larger and possibly some parcels that could be put together to make larger plots and spaces. So for a private business, not so much a private citizen who's going to do their own little thing, which is wonderful, but for the business that would come in, do we know how that's going to work?
Right now, any proposed urban farm that would be over one acre or to sell any produce on site would be a special exception and therefore be approved by the zoning hearing board, provided that they meet the requirements as set forth in the amendment.
So they would have to, but would they have to buy that property? I guess is my question. Would they buy that property, lease it? Are we gifting? I don't, yeah.
That would be up to the person who, or entity that is planning on providing the urban agriculture in that area. They could lease it.
It's options.
Yeah, it's similar to like having a single-family dwelling, you know, people could rent it or you could own it. It's just another use that would be permitted. It's just another use that would be permitted in those zoning districts.
Well, I guess my biggest question, and maybe I should just get to the point, if we're giving property and providing property in the city at that level, acre or more, is the city getting paid for that? And if it's private, is it all the taxable qualities that come along with the private business or entity, all of that applicable in this, in these endeavors?
I'm not able to speak on the taxability of an urban farm, but I would think that the property would be taxable.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
Mr. Puz, so this is just going to be an overlay zone over the existing property or is this going, how, the mechanism of how we're going to do this? Could you explain that?
Yes, one of the, one of the things we looked at when we first started digging into this.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
Pun intended or not intended?
It was an overlay district, however, the mechanics behind an overlay district made it unfeasible. We'd have to notify probably like 15,000 property owners. So instead, we looked at amending the zoning ordinance and the targeted areas that we're looking at just happened to all fall into the R2 medium density district, the R3 and the RLB district. So it made more sense to just amend the zoning ordinance in such a way as to just permit urban agriculture in those districts.
Okay, under that though, for example, East and West 38th Street is RLB. So those could be farms, is that?
Potentially.
Okay. Because I don't think that's what we want to do with that type of property that's high traffic.
I would think that the free market would dictate the better use for those properties than a urban garden.
Okay. But if they wanted to, they would be perfectly legally allowed to do that?
Yes.
Like they could just leave the house there and then put a garden, urban garden all around it?
Currently, if there is a house there, the garden would be considered an accessory use, so they would be permitted to do that right now.
Oh, so they're allowed to do that already? Okay, thank you. I was not aware of that.
Any other members of council?
Mr. President, I think just always when we have, you know, issues of zoning and changing zoning, it's important to Mr. Murzky's point that once we change it, it's not just what we're changing it for is eligible to be in that space. It's anything under that umbrella that meets, again, that particular umbrella of zoning. So we may be concerned about urban garden and it could be also four or five other things under the umbrella that we're looking to change the zoning to that is permissible. And we have to be careful to make a decision and I think it's important just to have the conversation always when we're changing zoning to look at what else is permissible and at the worst case scenario, are we comfortable with that that particular business being in the space that we want to change? Because if we're not careful, we'll get into, well, I don't like that. Well, we pass it. It's allowed. It's legal. And then we get into spot zoning and then it's a whole other issue that we don't and aren't allowed to legally get ourselves into. So I'm always as much as possible going to bring up the issue of remembering what else is allowable. And then, again, also to a point made earlier that once we make this change, an individual could do with their private property what is allowable in that space whether we like it or not. So we could have, you know, from 100 years ago, before there was buildings on East 38th Street, it could be, you know, a rural garden community all over again. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying that's an unintentional possibility. I know that's an extreme, but it is a reality. Because as we know, people can do what they want with their private property if it's appropriate to the zoning that they're in. So I just want to remember that. And again, my point, again, too, is I'm very, I want to be very aware and want us to be very alert on what we're doing with this property, in particular, the blighted areas and the property that may be acquired and facilitated by the redevelopment authority in the city and city groups and pseudo-governmental entities because if we're going to be leasing and it's still owned by the redevelopment authority, there's no taxable, it can't be taxed. It's not taxable. So we have a private entity making and generating revenue on a property that's owned by a 501(c)(3) or a non-taxable entity, then again, we're giving away the farm, we're giving away the, I'm sorry. That really was unintended. We're giving away property for nothing. And it becomes, we expand the non-taxable part of our community, which is, which is not, I don't think, the intention of any of us here today. So just a couple of things that are staying in my mind that I'll be watching and asking questions about. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of council?
Mr. President, just a quick comment here.
Go ahead, David.
I know, Matt, in the, in the proposed amendments, you, there's definitions to try to make sure we're defining with urban garden, market garden, farm stand or are. So again, I know that that's going to, that's happening to make sure we are defining it so that people don't expand those definitions further. So I think, I think that's, and I think also there's been discussion about the, all the other details involved as far as maintenance and signs. I don't know if I can just briefly talk about those items just to...
Oh, yes, yes. The, all urban gardens are urban markets, which the difference between an urban garden and an urban market is that urban market's either one acre or more or they sell something there. An urban garden, just like a plot of land where they grow, where they don't sell under an acre. Both are required to have a fence at least three feet high that does not obstruct the clear sight triangle at any intersections or driveways. Any accessory structure is required to be in the rear of the property, three feet from the side and rear property lines. So it has to not be at the front of the property. Accessory structures are not to be over 100 square feet unless it's over one acre, then it can be proportionally sized to fit the area. For the market gardens, they have to go through the zoning hearing board where they have to meet six requirements, where the zoning hearing board takes into consideration the proximity of other market gardens, traffic volume, off-street parking, farm stands. Also, the composting is permitted, however, it has to, and the market gardens or urban gardens shall not produce noise, vibration, air pollution, come a fire hazard or any other emissions. So that's to control any odors that would be, that could possibly be generated. Rain barrels are permitted. I think that's it. There's any questions on the requirements?
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Jones. Mr. Puz, I guess, could you get all of us copy, our council members, a copy of all those stipulations? You know, there's some things there that we would have never even thought of that are being brought forward here and I just think, just for the knowledge of us here on council, just to have a copy of those stipulations.
Of course, of course.
I appreciate that. Good suggestion, Jim. Any other members of council? Thank you, Matt. I don't think he'll be up again, so.
As you say, would you like me to read the planning commission recommendation at this time? I mean, that was kind of...
Yep. If anybody's in favor of the project, would you like to step up to the mic now, please? This is for speaking in favor of the project. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Sister Phyllis Hilbert, Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network. Honorable councilmen and councilwomen on the city of Erie. I'm here today to express my support on behalf of the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network for amending the zoning code of the city of Erie by adding a provision to allow an urban garden as a permitted use and market garden as a special exception in R2, R3 and RLB districts and further defining such uses and requirements. The SSJ Neighborhood Network is sponsored by the Sisters of St. Joseph of Northwestern Pennsylvania and provides leadership, advocates for local residents and partners with the broader community to develop opportunities for neighborhood revitalization. As much of the neighborhoods we serve are classified as food deserts, urban and market gardens have become for us an important means of providing our neighbors with increased access to fresh produce and healthy foods. Through five community gardens across our neighborhoods, more than 70 families adopt, tend and harvest their own garden boxes each year. One market garden provides neighborhood teens with seasonal jobs. The fruits of their labors provide produce for sales at our weekly farmer's market in the Little Italy neighborhood. Approved by the USDA, this market garden also allows the SSJ Neighborhood Network to accept and match the SNAP and FNMP Senior Produce Vouchers, further extending affordable and fresh produce availability to the recipients of these food assistance programs. The SSJ Neighborhood Network is committed to advocating for the valuable addition of urban gardens to all neighborhoods. We are encouraged by the efforts of the city zoning office to amend the city zoning codes to appropriately provide for urban and market gardens which will ultimately create a more healthy community throughout the city of Erie. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Sister.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Hoopsick and I own, I'm a co-owner and operator of Urban Farms and Urban Market. It's a business that I opened up last year. I had been hearing a lot of good things about these amendments that are going to be hopefully put into place. One of the additional things that I'd like to do, besides providing affordable, good quality produce to the community, is also donate part of my proceeds to various, the community centers like the JFK, Martin Luther King and Booker T. Washington. I've already spoken with them and they've permitted me to put a market in, at their locations. But where am I going to grow this stuff? I have to grow it in the city. I have to go out to Enboro or something like that. So I like the idea of being able to farm, urban farms, some property here in, in the city. This way, it's affordable and you don't have to transport it and you know where your food is coming from. You know that it's grown by local people and residents here in the community and I just think that it's great. You had mentioned something about the redevelopment authority. I am prepared to work with them, with their vacant lots and purchase them and possibly develop them later on down the line. Next year, when my business has grown and accumulated some monies to put back into the community. I'm working with local businesses, Lowe's, Frontier Lumber, Welch's, getting all these entities together so we can do something good for the community. So I think this is just a wonderful idea and I thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. My name is Jeremy Blazer. I'm the executive director of the Bayfront Eastside Task Force. I would too like to endorse these efforts. I echo Sister Phyllis Hilbert's comments, so I won't repeat many of those. Best has been operating urban gardens and an urban market for a few years now. At the same time, I am not exactly pleased with everything that's in this current ordinance, so I would like you to get copies of them, read them before you make any final decisions. So while I endorse this overall, I would like to point out some things that I think are flaws in what you're currently being presented with so that you can more fully understand maybe what's going on. The first thing I'm not real happy with is it seems like a lack of local research has been done. My organization and the Sisters of St. Josephs have operated urban gardens for numerous years. We've also operated urban markets, as I said, both of us having farm stands that sell fresh produce that has been grown and sold to our residents. You already know why that's important. But no one has approached any, either one of us to talk about what are we currently doing? And there's some points that I'll talk about a little bit later in the current ordinance that are against what we're currently doing. As I understand it, what we're currently doing has been worded as being not covered in the zoning, so I don't think it's clearly a violation. It's just not defined. So what we're trying to do today, I think, as Mr. Brendan said, is clearly define what it is that is existing and how do we have rules around what goes on there? Best has a long history of taking down blighted property. We have many vacant lots. I have over 40 vacant lots that we currently operate. And we're constantly looking for ways to reuse those lots. We'd love to put new homes on them and have new homeowners, tax-paying bodies come in and operate there and regrow our population, but frankly, there's not a market for that. So what we've done is looked at other uses of those properties. I'm happy, Mr. Jones, you always talk about what is the city going to get back from this? Are we going to get some tax revenue from this? Well, Best pays tax revenues on every single property we own, so you're getting taxes from our properties. And we're looking at other useful uses for those properties. So we put in things like, we call them parklets, little areas that are similar to a city park that we maintain. We plant nice plants. But we've also done gardens, raised garden beds and other gardens and partnering with other organizations so that we have fresh fruit and vegetable access within our community. And also looking at, rather than just grass that we have to pay to maintain, what are other uses that maybe improve the look and the viability of living in our neighborhood? And the way we do that is we look at other cities, other cities that have similar issues to Erie that we can learn from. So I've been to urban gardens in Detroit, in Pittsburgh, in Cleveland, in Baltimore, visibly working with the owners of those markets and those gardens to look at, what do they do? What are things that we can learn and bring back to our city and then represent in the East Bay Front neighborhood? The currently proposed regulations has a couple of points that we currently violate. And so I'd like to know, well, are those going to remain in the final ordinance you pass or there are going to be edits? And if they are remaining, what does that mean to us? One of those is fencing. The current ordinance says there has to be fencing three foot high around every garden. We do not have fences around our gardens and that's intentional. I have one fence that is more of a decorative piece on one of our gardens, but we want our gardens to be accessed by the public. We want people to come into our gardens to be welcomed. If this proposal, this ordinance goes through, there are some people that will garden and will want to protect their, their investment. So I know an example has been hops production and local brewers growing hops on a, on an urban area. If they want to put in a fence to protect their investment, they're going to do that. And I think that they have to follow the same laws. The rules are already on the books for fences, but don't impose fencing on a market or a garden that already exists that doesn't necessarily see the need for the fence. So I don't know why that was put in there, but I have an issue with it because it'd be quite costly for us to do it. And frankly, we'd probably remove some of our gardens if that became a official rule. Accessory structures, that would refer to things like sheds and, and tool, tools that you might want to keep on site. We currently have one that is 10 foot by 12 foot. It's 120 square feet. The current ordinance says it can only be 100 square feet. Am I to cut two feet off the end of our shed? Are we to move that shed off the space? These are things that I just think aren't completely well-thought. When I looked briefly, I jumped online and I looked at, what do other cities have in there? I looked at Detroit's ordinances, at Pittsburgh's ordinances, at Cleveland's ordinances. They don't have restrictive rules. They really are trying to enhance the use of gardens. And so while they say, if you want a fence, you have to follow the city's rules on fences. It's pretty clear. If you want to have a structure, it has to follow the structure's rules, but they actually encourage things like hoop houses where you can grow in an extended growing season and things of that nature. None of that is detailed in our current ordinance. Another thing that's detailed in other ordinances are soil testing. Sometimes the cities are imposing that the entities have to test the soil. We've tested the soil in all the lots that we currently grow in, tested for lead. It's very important that we test for lead and other hard, heavy minerals that... It's very important that we test for lead and other hard, heavy minerals that might be in the soil, because we don't want to open that garden, allow one of our neighbors to garden, and then expose them to something that they weren't aware to. So these are just some rules. I think if we work maybe with the local entities that already have some experience in this, we can enhance this ordinance, we can pass it, but at the end, it's going to be, need to be enforced. The zoning department, we work with, and I have a great relationship with Mr. Puz and the entire zoning office, and they do work with us on other issues that we bring to their attention and some zoning violations. At the same time, I think we could work together and make this a stronger ordinance, so when you pass something, hopefully down the road is, is good for all. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council. My name is Carrie Socksey. I live at 455 West Front Street. I'm here this morning, obviously, to reiterate my support for the proposed zoning or changes to allow urban farming in the city. It's not my intention to go blue in the face repeating myself. I've made my case to you all before. It was last August when I first came and talked about all the ways I think urban farming has the potential to be really transformative for our city and for the people that live here. But I do want to thank the people that have worked really, really hard on these proposed changes. Dave Brennan, obviously, is the sponsor of the resolution. Scott Henry, who's no longer at the Redevelopment Authority, but he really got this ball rolling for everyone. And Matthew Puz has put a ton of work into these changes, really thoughtful work, taking into consideration not only the needs of potential growers in the city, but also nearby property owners and what their considerations may be as we consider enacting these changes. So I'm really grateful to everyone that has gotten this, this far. I'm also grateful to you all for your, what I trust will be very thoughtful consideration of these changes. I think we have very little to lose here by easing restrictions on food production, fresh food production in the city of Erie. We're historically a manufacturing town, we pride ourselves on production, and I think that there's a lot of great potential for food grown in the city of Erie and what that could do for everyone who lives here. So thank you so much, I appreciate your consideration for these changes.
Good morning, council members. My name is Stephanie Seiner. This is the first council meeting I've ever been to, and I am a new resident of Erie. I love this city, I want to move here, I want to stay here, I will pay taxes here. And I support the proposed zoning amendments because I want to grow food in the city and I work with the Erie School District. I teach gardening clubs, I plant seeds with the kids, we have school gardens, and I've seen how excited and how passionate a lot of our, the urban children who live in our city are about growing food, and they have lots of questions, they have lots of interest. And I think that having, you know, having them be able to see a business opportunity that exists for that would be really important. And I have lived in other cities that have had a lot more urban agriculture, that have had small farms, the market gardens, urban gardens, and there have been a lot of connections to nutrition, to connecting with the youth, with the community, building a lot of pride around what used to be a vacant lot, and it's now kind of a beautiful place with flowers and food and opportunities and places for people to gather. And so I'm in support of that, and I just thank you very much for putting consideration into this.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mike Bailey, and I'm here representing the master gardeners, the Penn State Extension Master Gardeners. And I wanted you to know that we have been involved with a number of community gardens around town here. A couple of ones that I would like to mention, certainly the one down at the Amaya Soup Kitchen, okay, which has been in operation for, this is our fifth year of operation. We're also working with Jeremy Blazer from BEST, okay, on a garden for the refugee population, just as we've worked with the Sisters of Mercy over on the east side on Woodlawn Avenue regarding their Mercy Garden on, over there. We've also worked with the, the school district and some of the local churches promoting, okay, community garden activities. And I think we've been pretty successful. But what we'd, we'd hate to see happen right now is that, you know, whatever bill that you would pass would restrict some of our activities, and particularly the, the fencing component, which would make it very difficult, okay, for some of these organizations to continue their gardening activity, because that fencing, obviously, could be quite, quite expensive. And I also want to let you know that these gardens, okay, can be very, very attractive, okay? If you go down to the Amaya's Grove Garden, which we're very proud of, okay, you can see how attractive that particular garden is, okay? We try to use the same focus on all of our other gardens. And our gardens do not spread pesticides throughout the neighborhood. All of our gardens that we have been associated with so far are all organic, so, and we do not, you know, have smelly compost piles around either, okay? If done right, okay, that stuff can be very effective and does not have to be an eyesore or nose sore or whatever you want to call it, okay? So, and I, I'm here to also offer to you the, the services of the Penn State Master Gardener Group, okay, in doing whatever you can or whatever you'd like us to do to help, okay, get a, a program of urban gardening up and off the ground. We'd be, we'd be more than happy to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name is Jonathan De Silva. I'm a patent attorney, owns a law firm down in the Erie Technology Incubator, I'm also the lead curator of TEDx Erie. I'm here with Faith Kindig, my partner, and a new project I wanted to tell you about that is in direct support of this, this, this proposal. Urban, urban farming and urban gardens generate, hopefully, surpluses that do need to be done something with. What my partner and I are going to be putting in together at the PACA Building at 1500 State Street is what we call the Oasis Project. It's actually a vendor space that we're going to make available to the public to sell produce and goods and locally sourced products, as well as artisanal products and art. It is also something that, that addresses what, what a lot of these other organizations have already spoken about. There are food deserts that exist in Erie and all the efforts of existing organizations are not meeting that need. So we're proposing to have a space where farmers who don't have space for markets or need to sell their product can come to us and actually sell them through our space. One, one thing this ordinance does not cover as well is also hydroponics. A lot of produce can be grown without soil in covered areas, and part of what we're going to be doing is installing hydroponic system in the back of the buildings to provide greens all year round. So urban farming does not have to be limited to a growing season, especially in Erie when we're, we're wearing winter courts in May. So what, what we're hoping to, that, that, that your proposal will not limit is gardens of our type, which you can't see, you don't even know that they're there unless we tell you that they're there. So you need, you need to be aware that that exists, and yeah, while we might fall under light at industry, are there other regulations you might want to consider to either allow us to continue what we're doing or just, or just leave us alone? However you want to do that, understand that there are people that are going to be doing things because we really believe that access to good food, access to relatively cheap food, and access to entrepreneurship and give people opportunities to, to benefit from their hard work are being done. So if you have any questions about that, I know I've talked to some of you already, and I am available. Faith, do you want to add?
Hello. My name is Tara Hybel. I'm a resident of the city of Erie. This too is my first time at a council meeting. I'm in favor of the urban garden ordinances. I do, like some of the others, feel that there is some changes that could be made, including things like fences. I'd like to speak to the fact that, I didn't plan on speaking today, actually, but I'd like to speak to the fact that there is the Adopt a Lot Program, and that program currently, the city of Erie has to maintain those properties. Allowing people to have a small urban garden, which is actually already allowed, you can already have a garden, I think the question is whether or not you can put a stand in front of there, or how big it can be, and, and specific regulations that we don't already have, that major cities, as people have touched on, like Pittsburgh, Buffalo, Cleveland, Detroit, have already made these types of ordinances to allow for, you know, everyone to, to benefit from urban gardening. I'm not so sure of the idea of having giant farms that are extending over multiple acres that are vacant is a good idea, but the, the idea of small urban farming where everyone can have the opportunity to do so is a great idea, and with a background in sociology and psychology, the benefits psychologically and socially on the community and individuals, they're just unnumerable. So I think this will be a great project for Erie to look at allowing people to do. And another way to generate revenue is, like in Pittsburgh, they have the ability to put a small farm stand in front of their garden to sell their products. Well, they have to pay a permit for that farm stand. You have to, you know, there's, there's certain ways that the city can put tax, taxes or, have monetary gains from these urban gardens that won't be too taxing to the individuals. That's all I have to say.
Good morning, council. My name is Gary Horton, and I'm with the Reverend Ernest Franklin Smith Quality of Life Learning Center. I too endorse the concept of urban gardening or farming. I've had a garden all my life, my grandmother taught me how to garden. It's familiar with our culture. It's a way of life of a lot of people. It's a survival for a lot of the new American community. And I would think that, like many of the people that rose to support, we do have some questions. We want to make sure that it is fair and does not create any competition for people who do this as a way of life, not only to feed themselves, but to make a few dollars. And the young, one, one young lady mentioned the Adopt a Lot Program, or the current program where people come in and they buy the lot for $250. Is that program going to be affected by that also? And that, the whole idea of fencing, we, we do an urban garden at our location now. We have Muslim, Christian, Hindu, we have a lot of young people that farm in that garden. We don't have it fenced in. It's a peace garden, it's an educational tool, not just a process of feeding oneself. We also have an environmental garden, a rain garden, and then we grow flowers in that and try to seed the bee population and things like that. So the urban garden has a great potential and use right now. I think urban gardening should be, or urban farming should be for all urban neighborhoods. I don't think we should exclude the neighborhoods that have already or always have done gardening, and some of the provisions would potentially create a handicap for them right now. The people that are growing food that you have no idea about. As many of you know, we also have a concern of the gentleman that spoke about an aquaponic greenhouse. We've been trying to build a facility like that on the east side for seven or eight years now, and that the funding has been a bar to it, but we know that, again, it's something that is familiar to the culture of the people that we serve, jobs and ability to feed themselves. So the questions that were raised about soil testing, I remember we were working around Nickel Plate Road at one time, I mean, Nickel Plate Garden Stand to put a urban garden there at 19th and Parade, and no one remembered until after we had been putting months into the planning, that fires had occurred on a lot of the properties that we were talking about gardening and the soil hadn't been tested. And to, to be able to understand what was in the soil is very important, particularly when you look at the health impact that it has on our community. So while this, I support this concept, it's something, like I said, that's a way of life that we're already doing, I want to make sure that, that we don't create any unfair competition or build the process out of the reach of the people who are currently doing this, who, who didn't have a study. They just remember that they had some soil and they could get some seeds and with some hard work and some sweat, with a hoe and a shovel and a pair of gloves, that they could grow some tomatoes or some collard greens or some green beans or even some corn in the city that they could feed themselves. And they didn't go into it to try to make money in the inner city, they went into it to feed themselves and that. And I just, I hope that, again, that we don't create any, with good intentions, any kind of competition that disrupts that flow, as Sister Phyllis so eloquently gave and as the people from BEST did. And I, but I overall think it's a great idea, except I think we need to probably look at some of the concerns that were raised here today. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to speak in favor of the amendments? Are there any other citizens to speak in favor of the amendments? Please step up.
My name is MacDonnell. My thought in this is, is this going to create jobs for the kids for summer? This is what I'm thinking about. I think this is a good time to think about creating jobs, because school will be out pretty soon. And those kids need something to occupy their minds. There's an old saying, idle mind is a dangerous thing, and it is, believe me, it is. But if we can keep them busy, and I think this is a good opportunity to keep them busy. Think about that.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to speak in favor of the amendments? Are there any other speak, speakers in favor of the amendment? One last time, are there any other citizens in favor of the amendment that want to speak? Hearing none anymore? Let's move on to, are there any citizens against the amendments? Are there any citizens to speak against the amendment? One last time, is there any citizens that want to speak against the amendment?
Again, good morning, council president, state members of council. My name's Matt. Puz, I'm the Planning Commission Secretary, and I'm here to read the Planning Commission's recommendation. The city of Erie Planning Commission at the regular meeting on January 18th, 2017, completed their six-month review of regulations, or the lack thereof, within the city concerning urban agriculture or crop farming. The Planning Commission was tasked to make a recommendation to the city council for any appropriate amendments to zoning ordinance to permit such land uses with proper safeguards and restrictions. The proposed amendment is a result of those efforts. With regards, the proposed amendment, the, the Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of the amendment for the following reasons. One, urban agriculture should be encouraged. Two, the current zoning ordinance does not adequately address urban agriculture. Three, urban agriculture appears to be consistent with the Erie City Comprehensive Plan, respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Puz.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. President, we have timeframes in place so far. I mean, I know there's a, this process of the hearing and votes, et cetera, but is there a timeframe that ideally, if things all go according to plan, that we're looking to implement? And, and what does that look like once implemented?
I would think that if all goes well, the amendment would be approved within one to two months. And from there, urban agriculture would become a permitted use.
Mr. President, I'd like, I'm, I'm in support of this, and, and the reason I'm asking so many questions is because that's how supportive I am, because I want it to be done well and done right. To a couple, to multiple citizens' points, we don't want to overlabor or belabor those who are already doing this on a more private level, or more personal, interpersonal level. My concern is the much larger use of property for urban agriculture. So I, I would be interested in maybe some more conversation if it's, I don't know if it's a study session, I don't know what the format would be, maybe a study session, with, with yourself. And, and I think we bring in house, you know, with folks from the Planning Commission and, and even BEST and, you know, Sisters of St. Joseph's Neighborhood Network that are doing it in a larger-than-private way and doing it pretty successfully. I would be very interested in that and participating in that and having that happen very, very soon, so.
And I'd like to say, someone my age- And I'd like to say, someone my age, I can remember when this wasn't even an issue in the city, when much of West 38th Street was farming, and my grandfather owned a little piece up there. This is nothing new, we're just going back and reinventing a good idea. So thank you, Mr. Puz. And to the members of the public, we will be voting on this at a later meeting. And that'll conclude our first, first public hearing. Rose?
Oh, the second hearing is for the waterfront conditional use.
Is the snare for okay? Okay.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. Is there anybody here with the project, Mr. Guzek? Would you like to step up and? Thank you.
Good morning, Council members. My name's Mark Guzek. I'm here with my wife, Amy Guzek, and our architect, John Evans from Gary Matzak Architects. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for making this process a little more expedient for us to, to keep moving forward. Basically, what we're doing is we're building a one-story family dwelling in the waterfront district. It is actually kind of between Front Street and Second Street. And it is just east of Independence House that is down in that area, overlooking the bay and the waterfront. It is essentially intended to be the home for my wife and myself if we make it through the design process and, but to live in for our retirement years. And that's basically our, my, my simple description. We do have some, we do have some visuals here too, if you would like to see them.
Please.
Sure.
Mr. President, she's going to get an easel for you to be able to set up so he can see and no one has to pass them around.
Can I bring it on the stage? I can't see. I can't see.
This is a generic view of the location. This is the Independence House, Second Street parallel to the bottom of this picture. Front Street is here, bump there, Cascade Street comes down here. Probably what we're talking about is this strip here that goes from Second Street to the Front Street right away on the block overlooking Prescott Bay. This, this particular picture was taken before 2011, and there was a house existing on the site. Here's a picture of that house. And even though it's a front, a Second Street address, it lines up with the houses on Front Street. And it makes a lot of sense because it gives you a view of the bay. But anyway, this, this structure was demolished in 2011, I believe. That's an introduction to the site. I'm going to turn this back on now. Right where this house was is where we wanted to build the new residence. It will be a one-story residence in this shape. Front Street ends over here, and this is the edge of the block overlooking the bay. Simple as that. But.
Any questions from council?
We've been through the process, design review, planning, and zoning because of variances required because of the setback from Second Street. All of those have been granted and ready to proceed.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Murfsky.
What's the square footage of that, of that structure? Yes.
The house itself is about 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Consistent with the neighborhood, then?
There are one-story, two-story structures.
Fairly, yeah. I think it's.
Probably a little bit less.
I would think it.
I really don't know.
Okay. And then, so that the long piece was then a garage?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
The waterfront conditional or the waterfront area is, as we know, some of the best property in town and we, and it's limited. And it's kind of unusual, not unusual, but it's different having someone with their, you know, personal home and all of those things, but, but it's a beautiful opportunity to be able to do it. The reason I bring it up is because there's processes in place for reasons, and that waterfront use is, and that waterfront property is important. And so again, we have these processes in place, and we have them in place for a variety of reasons. And so I know this isn't directly connected to this project in relation to what you're presenting, but I think it's important. I just want to have it, you kind of want to record that we have things and processes in place directly related to waterfront property for a reason. And it takes, for me, it's, it has to be an extreme concern or issue to, to break that process and to usurp that process in any way. So I think it's a great project and congratulations on that. But I just also wanted to have it kind of on the record to say that there's process in place for a reason, and if there's a not valid, or I shouldn't say valid, that's not the right word, extreme reasons to usurp the process in our, in our waterfront areas, we usually don't do that. So I just wanted to, again, say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Murfsky.
I noticed on your architectural drawing there, as the Village at Lutheran Square, is this going to be a nonprofit or, is this taxable property or is this tax exempt?
No, it's on, the survey was done by.
That's, that's got to, that's incorrect. It has zero to do with the Village of Lutheran Square, zero zip.
Okay. So it will be, it's going to be private residence taxable?
I'm sorry for interrupting. Yes, absolutely. I mean, this is a private residence. I think when Laird did the, did the survey, they made a typo on that. That's the first time we noticed that through this entire two-month process. But good catch, Bob.
Thank you. There's no connection whatsoever.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have just one question, John. The, where's the other buildings? I'm trying to see where the other buildings are next to it. Is that the squares to the right, those individual houses?
There are three residence sections here that are rental units, they're two-story ones, and they enter off Second Street also on the east side of property.
And what we actually took into account when we designed the house was, you can see it comes over a little bit, but it does not obstruct their view of the bay. We actually took that into account in the design.
And on the left, to the west, that's the other, the larger building that you showed in the site plan?
This is where Independence Court is.
Okay. So you're past that piece, so you're, you have the cone of vision to see out?
Yes, we actually, we actually, I actually worked with them when we cleared that property to clear some of the overgrown that they had at no charge. And we worked together to put that row of arborvitus up there for privacy. And you can see that's also what we're designing in for, for privacy slash security to use more plantings than we are going to be using fencing.
So it's really going to line up with the buildings that are further down to the east, correct?
It really lines up with the buildings on Front Street.
Okay. So there's a precedent for that location. You're not sticking up past them.
It's a Front Street property with a.
Yeah, if you.
Got it. There you go. That's why I wanted to finally, thank you.
If you were, if you were, for instance, in Liberty Park looking up at the block, it would line up pretty much with all those houses out there.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, yeah, is there a timeframe? Like, when do you want to look to break ground and all those things?
Well, he's still working on the construction, Gary, John's still working on the construction drawings, but my hope is, is before, on or before the fall of this year to have occupancy then by the spring of 2018.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll give him a minute and. Oh, you can, sure, if you want. We will now hear from any citizens.
They can take those, no? He can have them.
You can take them with you, sir, if you want to. Yeah. I don't know if you were staying or not, but. Are there any citizens to speak in favor of the project? Are there any citizens to speak in favor of the project? One more time, are there any citizens to speak in favor of the project? Are there any citizens to speak against the project? Are there any citizens to speak against the project? One last time, are there any citizens to speak against the project? Mr. Puz?
Again, good morning, Council President, state members of council. My name's Matthew Puz, the Erie City Planning Commission Secretary. I'm here to read the recommendation. The City of Erie Planning Commission at the regular meeting on March 21, 2017, reviewed an application by Mark Guzek for a one-family dwelling located at 946 West Second Street. The property is located in the WR Waterfront Residential District. Since all changes in use or conditional uses in this district, the proposal shall be presented to the governing body for their approval. After reviewing the application, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends that council approve the one-family dwelling. The commission believes that the one-family dwelling should be granted a building permit on the grounds that, one, all zoning requirements have been addressed, and, two, this is an appropriate use for this property. The City of Erie Design Review Committee at the regular meeting on March 1, 2017, voted four to zero to approve the design of the single-family dwelling, respectfully submitted. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? David, any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Puz. And that will conclude our public hearing, and we will vote on this at a later meeting. And thank you very much for your investment in the city.
Yeah, we can go on to citizens to be heard now.
I hope that's right. We have one citizen that wrote in ahead of time, Mr. John Franco, is he here? Mr. Franco? Okay, we'll now open it up to citizens to be heard.
Good morning, Council. Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street, EF Smith Quality of Life Learning Center. I just want to thank the administration, the work of the administration and support of the council, the efforts of Mr. Chris Mong and his staff, and those of you that have come to working arrangement with the Community Development Block Program this year. It's like night and day from the experience of last year. It gives hope that we can leverage the city's support with some of the other efforts that we have underway. My organization did not get what we requested. I am very happy, though, that we're getting something from the city for the first time in 11 or 12 years. I hope to prove to you, to show to you, that your investment in our organization will reap triple return on your investment. I have one interest in particular that I'd like to share with you, and that is our efforts on behalf of trying to tie or create an opportunity for inner-city people to be trained and employed on the many public and private projects that are underway in our community today. Several people have often said, nothing beats a bullet like a job. And so what we hope to do is to convince the developers and owners of projects, whether they be public or private, that are underway in our community, to give hope and opportunity to people in the community that are willing to be trained for some of those jobs that will be created. There's almost a billion dollars' worth of work online. If we're ever to give young people the hope that there is an opportunity, if they go a certain way, that perhaps they could go onto a very well-family, wage-sustaining job experience. We know that there's a lot of work downstate at the Cracker Plant, and so we know that a lot of our workforce is already engaged down there. This is a perfect opportunity, whether there's public money in a project or not, for a developer who are owner of a project to provide employment training and perhaps a job for people who live within the City of Erie. And so again, I just want to thank you for your efforts and your support. Even though you haven't voted yet, it is on the agenda for first reading, and I, I've come down here and I've complained, I've come down here and I've requested, I'm down here today to just thank you and ask you to support the administration's proposal before you today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, just because Mr. Horton is here for that vote, because they're still working on numbers and all of the logistics and details aren't in from the department upstairs, we are going to be not voting on that today. But again, once they have the official numbers, we have to have the official, as you know, the detailed numbers accurate before we can vote and pass it on to the next level of approval. So it is on the agenda, but it's, we are actually not going to vote on it today because they weren't able to have the numbers to us in time today.
Mr. President, just.
Yes, Mr. Murfsky.
Clarification, those are from HUD, not from our department.
Right, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah, our department upstairs, thank you, Mr. Murfsky, did not receive the accurate numbers from HUD on what the actual amounts are going to be so that we can, you know, accurately do what we need to do and submit it. So, so yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, they're doing their job very well.
And on a note that this council administration made sure this year that the process was very, very transparent. That was our wish last year, and I want to thank the administration for falling through with it. Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
My name is McDonald. I live in 19th and Reed. Good to see the mayor down here. I just about forgot what he looked like. I haven't seen him down here. He should come down more often. We should be able to talk to him because he's supposed to be the leader. If you don't talk to your leader, you don't know what's going on. I want to say more about those summer jobs. Do those kids mean anything to you all? I mean, all of them mean something to me. I don't want to see them go to jail. And if they don't get some money in their pockets, it's like my friend Willie C. said, those kids need some money in their pockets. Give them a job, they won't be out there selling drugs. Of course, somebody benefiting behind that, got them kids out there selling them drugs, it's a bad thing. But they got to get some money from somewhere. You, when you're out there selling drugs, you got to be looking over your back. You get a job, they're going to take taxes out, so all of that will be legal. I'm asking you. I'm asking you to, you're supposed to be the leaders, get some summer jobs for them kids. Those kids, they'd rather work than for you to just give them money. And it's, I think it's good that they want to work. You take, you give a kid a job, he'll appreciate it. And that give him some work ethic. But if, it's just like sending a kid to college. If you don't make him help send himself through, there's chances that he won't even succeed in getting through. I've known some that, you know, rich kids. I don't know. Them rich kids, they got that silver spoon in their mouth, so they don't have to get out and hustle. I know, last year, I think it was, I met some kids from down out in the country out there. They had jobs, and these kids in the city, they're here where the jobs are, and they can't get a job. That picture don't look right to me. It just don't look right to me. Take care of home first. You got a woman out in the street, you're going to take care of your home, and your wife's going to be telling you something that you don't want to hear. Take care of home first. You're going out here, and it's a good thing, too, to give those kids a job. But give these kids in the city a job. You can't go wrong. It's our money. You say, "We got that from the government." Where the hell you think the government got it from? They're taking everything but the kitchen sink, and they'd take that, too, if they could. I hope y'all don't have that Trump mentality, you know? Mine, me and mine, and no more. Just me and mine. That ain't where it's at. You ain't up there for that. You're supposed to be up there for everybody, but there's a lot of, I don't know. I'm going to tell you something. When you abuse them kids, you abusing God, and he will deal with you in his time. Now, I promise you that. You think I'm lying? You keep living. You'll see. It'll affect you some way, one way or the other. Don't abuse our kids. And that's what you're doing when you don't do what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to be leaders. Start leading. You're supposed to be the mothers and the fathers. Be what you're supposed to be. Be what you think you are. Don't just think you are. Be that. The kids are depending on y'all. I hope you come through for them. If you don't, shame on you. Shame on you. Y'all want to move to a higher position? Start deserving where you are now. If you don't do nothing for them kids, you shouldn't even be up there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? We'll move on with the meeting, Rose.
Okay. Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 15985, official ordinance number 102017. An ordinance renewing an Erie downtown improvement district for the area shown on Exhibit A at the request of the Erie Downtown Partnership and Improvement District Association and a coalition of property owners, business leaders, retailers, and local government and institutional representatives as provided by the Neighborhood Improvement District Act of 2000. Bye, Mr. Brennan, and seconded by Mr. Winarsky. The council filed ordinance bill number 15985, and now known as official file ordinance number 102017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm very much in support of this. I just wanted to, I don't know how we could do it beyond just maybe a request, but one of the things that John mentioned, that, of course, they have the downtown parameters, but because they're so close to other businesses just outside the parameters, that they're willing to work together. And so if we could find, you know, we can reach out to the E-DID and ask, how are some of the ways they're doing that? What are some of those businesses? Just kind of get a feel for how this is going to extrapolate out beyond just those boundaries because, again, it's so close and so connected, you know, 13th, 14th Street. So, that would just be a request if we could, and maybe even have a system where, I know they naturally, organically come and they present and tell us what they're doing, but maybe put something in place officially that there would be. I know when we were partnered with the Erie Regional Chamber at one point, they would come in and at least give us an annual report on how they're interfacing and what they're doing and all that. So, I'd like to see something like that, if possible, with this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, I just want to say, I know when Mr. Buguna was here, he did talk about the, those benefits, Mr. Jones, and I know, I don't think it was full, I think there were some benefits being offered. I don't know if it was finalized, but I'll definitely check with him as a liaison to see where that's at. And I know Mr. Buguna did mention that there would be a report coming soon to come to council and keep a surprise of things, so I'll ask him about that and report back.
You'll keep us informed, then, Mr. Brennan?
Yeah. All right. Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kowalski. City council passed official file ordinance number 102017, finally, by a 7-0. Council file number 15986, official ordinance number 112017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Sisters of Mercy for the purchase of police equipment, fire prevention supplies, war equipment, and winter maintenance equipment. By Mrs. Arrington and seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance bill number 15986, and now known as official file ordinance number 112017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kowalski. City council passed official file ordinance number 112017, finally, by a 6-0. And the first one, too, I forgot Mel's not here, so make that 6-0. Council file number 15987, official ordinance number 122017, an ordinance requiring all persons, partnerships, businesses, and corporations to obtain a permit for any construction or development, providing for the issuance of such permits, setting for certain minimum requirements for new construction and development within areas of the City of Erie which are subject to flooding, and establishing penalties for any persons who fail or refuse to comply with the requirements or provisions of this ordinance. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council filed bill number 15987, and now known as official file ordinance number 122017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kowalski. City council passed official file ordinance number 122017, finally, by a 6-0. Ordinance for first reading. Council file 15989, an ordinance amending official ordinance number 802005, known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Erie, by changing the classification of property commonly known 648 West Third Street, 646 West Third Street, 642 West Third Street, 640 West Third Street, 636 West Third Street, West Third Street, 632 West Third Street, West Third Street, West Third Street, 624 West Third Street, 165, 624 feet, and 641 West Third Street, from R2 Medium Density Residential to WR Waterfront Residential. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council filed ordinance number 15989, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kowalski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15989, by a 6-0 on first reading. That'll take us to new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any separations? Rose, did we? Rose, did we pull number one?
Yes.
Okay. Number one has been pulled till next meeting?
Any other separate, or any separations?
Are there any other separations? Hearing none. Rose will move on.
All right. Moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kowalski.
Okay. That takes us to committee reports?
That does take us to Mr., or to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports, you said?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Merzke, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things I want to comment on. Regarding the urban garden, like Mr. Jones, I'm in favor of the urban garden concept and the zoning changes, but we do have to do our due diligence and make sure that we understand all of the unintended consequences of a change. And we know from history and from the past that when we make changes, sometimes we aren't thinking about all of the possibilities within that zoning. So, I want to thank him for his questions, and I want to thank Mr. Brennan for bringing this up and spearheading this. I believe that what Mr. Brennan said is absolutely right. Basically, we're just catching up to what is already occurring, and so, working with our partners in the community, I believe that we can craft a strong zoning ordinance for urban gardening that will allow the urban farming to occur, at the same time protecting the citizens of the City of Erie and making sure that it's the best use of that property moving forward. I also just would like to, again, thank the Sisters of Mercy for their $15,000 contribution for public safety. As a nonprofit, the Sisters don't have to pay taxes, but they willingly give that money for public safety, recognizing that our police and fire, if their building catches on fire, our firefighters are going to go, and if there's a crime there, our policemen will go. So, we graciously accept their contribution and thank them for that. And finally, I just want to wish all of our mothers a Happy Mother's Day because I don't think we'll be here before the Mother's Day. So, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the hearing take for the urban farming, a lot of great takeaways, a lot of good input that we received today, so we'll definitely talk to zoning. I'm sure zoning will review that, but I do think we should, as Mr. Jones mentioned, have a study session to kind of review that after they get a chance to get that discussion. I do know that there was input received from Gannon University, West Bayfront, and several urban farmers, but definitely the input today from BAST and from the Sisters is greatly welcomed, and we want to make sure that this is going to be the best solution for, to meet our needs. So, I'm definitely looking forward to that further discussion. One clarification I was going to make is the, I think it was brought up, I forgot who, but the, on residential property, if it's already, residential, if it's a residential property and it's, the primary use is residential right now, you could farm and do anything you want. I mean, that's been done for centuries. You know, my grandfather, my father, they used to do it all the time on our property, and it's still being done. So, in no way is that going to affect that current use. But if the property is, if it's a residential property and residential is not the primary use, if it's just an open lot, that's when, what we're trying to do with these amendments is allow farming to occur on those properties. But in no way are we restricting or doing anything to the current, if there's a residential property that's already residents on it, we're not restricting that because that's been going on for centuries. So, I just wanted to clarify that. A couple of meetings I attended, there was an Erie Refocus presentation at the Jefferson on the April 20th. Our Economic Development Director, Chris Mong, and Erie County Planning Director, Kathy Rosick, were there presenting. They talked about the action plan and talked a lot about the, just the principles of the whole comprehensive plan. There was a lot of good questions and public input at that meeting. I also want to mention that council will be receiving quarterly updates on action plan from the action team. There is going to be a meeting of the action team in May to gather this quarterly report, and then they're going to present that to council. So, we'll schedule that. Erie Downtown Partnership, I attended the facade workshop 101 that they had on April 26th. The workshop was held by our hosts at Radius Co-Work. It was a good turnout. I was invited to just give an introduction to the group and talk about, you know, just give a quick introduction about the benefits to the city when property owners, and the benefits to their businesses, when property owners improve their properties. Not only the aesthetic benefits, but the financial benefits for obtaining, keeping their current customers and for visitors from out of town seeing these properties that are renovated. It just is a good thing to further attract investment and to bring in more business. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that the presentation at Erie had their awards program, and several businesses were, received awards. One was Erie Insurance for the Armory. Another one was the Lawrence Park Diner, and the third one was the Benedictine Sisters of Erie for their St. Mary's space. I just wanted to congratulate them. And really, award is for either preserving history or coming up with a program that is benefiting the City of Erie in some way. Thank you.
Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very brief. Once again, back to the urban farms and gardens. I believe everybody here on council is in agreement for the ideas and concept of it. The only thing we want to do, our due diligence is to get the stipulations right, whether there should be a three-foot fence or whether there should be a shed on the property. We just want to go through and do our job to make sure when these properties arise or these farms arise, that they are an asset to the community that they're going to be in. And even with our other public hearing with the developments, we, as a council, we want to see more development and growth in this town. I mean, we like to see people investing in this city. What we got to keep in mind, though, because what we hear out there, just like a lot of the citizens here, that not enough tax revenues, 30%, 35%, not on the tax rolls. So, although we want to see these developments come in, we just got to do our job and make sure we can get more tax revenue, businesses, developments, homes in this town. So, Erie Insurance across the street, they started their, of their development there, and it's nice. They pay taxes. So, for the good of the city and the good of the citizens, we just got to keep our tax base and keep an eye on our tax base. Other than that, that's it. Our Erie Otters are in the finals of the OHL Championship, so get out there and support your Erie Otters. Thank you. No cowbell.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just continue to chime in in relation to the two public hearings we had today. The one in the waterfront conditional use, I made some comments around process, and just wanted to make sure that that was very clear, that none of that was personal. I think it was a great endeavor, a great couple in our community that given in so many different ways, professionally and personally. My concerns about that was before I even knew it was private or who it was, that usurping the process in relation to our waterfront conditional use is a big deal. And that's why, these several years ago, myself and others that were on that current council... council or a previous council, reworked on the zoning ordinance to make sure that anything, any changes, anything that's going up in the waterfront condition or in the waterfront district, had to come in front of council. And so that's a precedent that we didn't want to set by kind of usurping the process without, you know, a very serious or stringent need to do that. So again, just wanted to make sure that everyone understood in relation to the project, knew there was nothing personal, it was just kind of business, and keeping the process in place because it's there for a reason, and we didn't want to set a precedent in that way. And so, you know, blessings and good luck on that project as it goes forward. You earn retirement, for sure. The next thing, the urban garden. Again, my concerns-- my questions are because I do support it and believe in the possibilities and the necessity, I think, also of being able to utilize underused properties. I'm really big on, even the ministry that I'm a part of, we do a lot of the same kind of work and take young people out of the city to teach them about agriculture and teach them about being more producer than just consumer. Those are some principles and lessons that we teach, and so I believe in it wholeheartedly. Again, I just want to make sure that it is done appropriately, it doesn't hurt those organizations and individuals who are doing and have been doing on a private or smaller, yet successful level. I don't want to overburden them in our effort to regulate, because that's part of our job, is to regulate how certain things are done on a larger scale or for private and business endeavors. Again, the tax base is, of course, a major issue, but also I just want to make sure that, you know, because we have so much property, Mr. Puzz read off the enormous amount of blighted properties and open lots of land in certain areas of the city. And I think it's important that we honor that and respect that and watch that, because, again, as I mentioned last meeting, a lot of people are running out of the Lower East Side, and Erie Insurance is buying every blade of grass they can on the Lower East Side, so there's value there, and we don't want to lose that and give it away. I attended the-- and was a part of the Unified Erie Nonviolence Strategy that was-- is a best practices program from around the country, and specifically Kansas City. Myself and a delegation from Erie went about a year and a half ago to see how to implement this program, and it was actually a very successful event. The city police, I mean, there was more law enforcement as well as service providing community organizations that were there than I've ever really ever seen in one space in the city, working together. There were young men and women that were invited who are-- who've had some challenges and had kind of been involved in some antisocial and even violent behavior, and were given an opportunity to say, hey, we know what you're doing, you're not hiding, but we care about you enough to say, look, stop, and we're going to give you the resources to help you stop. Whatever's keeping you in that lifestyle or that mindset, we want to provide opportunities for you to get out of that. But here's the other thing, if you don't stop, this-- we love you, but we love the community as well, and we're not in 1% of-- in less than 1% of the community or members of the community are doing 99% of the violent and unsafe behavior and activities in the community. And so the greater love of Erie is going to cause us to have to put you in a place where nobody wants you to be, because the whole mantra was, we want you to be alive, safe, and out of prison. But if you choose to go the other way, then there's processes in place, and they're going to work better together than they ever have. But that was a message that was given, and all of the young men in that room accepted that message, and were apart, and we ate dinner together, and it was very positive. So I see great things coming from that, and I'm excited about that. Strong Vincent and Villa, young ladies, and we had Cathedral Prep in here not too long ago, celebrating our young people. I didn't want to over-- again, overtalk the whole, like, Native American parable thing, but it's important. Whatever we feed is going to grow. And a lot of times, we feed the energy or the negative energy of what our kids are doing not so well, or doing poorly, but we don't celebrate them when they are doing well. And so I'm glad we were able to do that today, not just the students, but their families, the administration, and the coaches. So I was excited about that. Yes, on Sunday, I was able to participate and attend an event over across the street in Perry Square. Mercyhurst University had some of their students there, Crime Victims Center, other organizations, just a community rally, and the theme was mercy, dealing with our young people in the community and teaching them about how important they are and how valued they are and how much assets they are to our community. And so it was great, and a very eclectic group of people, and performers and speakers and dancers and rappers and spoken word, all this stuff. And it was a beautiful community event, and the rain held off for most of it as well on Sunday. I was happy about that. Tomorrow, I will be attending and participating in the Erie Youth Workers Award Celebration tomorrow at-- on East 38th at the McLean Church location. And this is an organization or a group, excuse me, a part of Unified Erie that celebrates people who work with our youth in the community. And so it's a big deal, and it's kind of like a red carpet event for youth workers in the city. And so I'm excited and looking forward to being a part of that and being at that event. And also to echo Mr. Murfsky's celebration of mothers, I want to say Happy Mother's Day. My mom's a mother of 14 biologically and probably hundreds of young people around the community who have eaten at our table and bumped me to the side over the years. Happy birthday to my mother, Vicki Jones, and my grandmother, her mother, Maddie George Riley, who is 87. And she's-- I think she'd still jack me up if I got smart. So two wonderful women and mothers that are directly connected to me and to all mothers. We honor you and we thank you, whether you're a biological mother or you're in the position of mother by serving young people who you've brought under your wing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Arrington.
I have a few things. First, I want to say I had the pleasure going to First Good Samaritan Church this past Saturday. They had a prayer vigil for the violence in the Erie community, so that was an awesome breakfast. I really appreciated that. And I just need to say something. You know, I get bothered when we have citizens come up and tell us, City Council as a whole, that we don't care about the kids. I know for one thing, I live and breathe kids 24/7 a day. So I definitely care about these kids. If we keep them busy, we'll keep them out of trouble, but it starts at home. We have to start in the homes first. What we teach our children in the home is what they're going to bring out to our community. So we have to start being examples in our own houses. But we do need mentors, so when the kids do come in the community, that they can continue to have role models to follow. And another thing, you know, it's just sad that we have the continuing gun violence, we have the continuing drug overdoses. Next Saturday, May 13th, and I do this every year, the day before Mother's Day, I do a Stop the Violence March and Rally here at Perry Square, which it will be here this year at Perry Square. That's next Saturday, and it starts at 12:00 PM in the afternoon. But I'm doing it a little different this year. This year is called the Stop the Violence and the Drug Overdose March and Rally. I partner with a mother, Sue Johnson, who lost her son Ryan to a heroin overdose, because people need to understand, no matter how we lose our children, we all still have that same pain. And we want to raise awareness, not just to the gun violence, but also to the heroin overdoses that is tearing up our community, is tearing up families, and we want to raise awareness to parents who haven't lost their children to either/or, so they don't suffer the same pain that we suffer each and every day. I want to bring the community together so we can all heal together. So any and everybody is invited. We're going to march down to Dobbs Landing, then we're going to come back up to Perry Square here to have a march, I mean, to have a rally, which I'll be speaking and Ms. Johnson will be speaking. So if any and everybody, if you're available, come on out, because this is an issue that we're really going to have to deal with both of them this summer. So with that said, God bless the Erie community, and we definitely need to come together and stay together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. A few brief comments. I attended the ONE Pension Meeting, and I'm sure the Controller will have some comments on that. Tended the Law Day Luncheon, which was very interesting and very informative, first time I ever attended that. In speaking on urban farming, I think Curtis and the rest of council members said it well that we're all in favor of it, but we need to proceed with caution. I know that if I finally retire, my dream will probably come true that I can plant fig trees next to my house, but that will not probably happen. But I think it's a good step, and, you know, right now, we've got to think outside the box with developing the city. So, you know, I want to thank council, and especially Councilman Brennan, for pushing this forward a while back and getting it out in the forefront. And also, I want to thank all the citizens, and believe me, there were many, who contacted me via email. They're all in support of the project, nobody against, and it's probably in response to, I think there was an article in Erie Reader, and they, yes, they did contact me, so I want to thank them. Moving on to Councilman Jones's comments on Strong Vincent High School, I can only imagine what those students are thinking. I remember I went through this when my daughter's high school got closed, and at the same time her high school got closed, I woke up in the morning to find out mine was also a casualty. Not pleasant losing your high school. I don't think the public really understands what that means, to not be able to attend a football game, to look at a building knowing it's not yours anymore. My heart can only go out to these students, especially, you know, the little bit of glory they had on the last year. My mother attended that high school, and I sure hope, whatever plan that the school board comes up with, I sure hope they consider the kids at the end of the day, because losing a high school, losing your identity, is hard. Those that have a high school don't understand that, but those who've lost schools, there's something personal to you, and they're a lot more than just a place you spent four years at. And I'd like to also say that it was my pleasure, along with Councilman Murfsky, to attend the Workers Memorial Day on Monday here at City Hall, where they honored all those who passed away, and luckily, this year, there was only one person, and we never want to see anybody. But it was a very, a very heartwarming service and a tribute to all those who go out there and do the things that sometimes we don't appreciate. But I want to thank the trades unions for inviting us. I'd also like to wish Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, especially my 90-year-old mother, who's probably watching the show, and will critique me when I get home. I can guarantee you that. Sonia, you've met her, you know that. She will be on me. So, and brings me to Mrs. Arrington's points, which I think are very telling, that some people do the talking, but some people do the walking. And until you've been in Sonia's shoes or any of those mothers, you get to realize how important mothers are. In all my years on the school board, I was never proud of the number of students that we expelled. That was not a good moment. But at the bottom of the whole problem, and I think Curtis and Sonia have hit it over the years, that it's really, no matter what all the government leaders do and the clergy, it's really up to the parents. And in those cases where the parents took blame for their kids' actions or took an interest in their kids, I think good things happen. And I've always said, like, with schools, where you have a good teacher, a good parent, and you've got a student buying into the system, there ain't nothing going to stop that kid. He's going to go wherever he wants to go. Sky's the limit. So thank you, Mrs. Arrington, for your comments, especially getting so close to Mother's Day. And finally, on a-- what are you hiding for? But Councilman Jimmy Winarsky is celebrating his birthday today?
That's what they tell me.
You want to let us in?
All 20 of them are.
We want to wish Jim a happy birthday. Jim, I'm not going to sing "Stole That" to you. Maybe we could have got the mayor to come down and--
We'll sing that for Sunday.
Joe, you think we could have got the mayor to come down and--
Twenty-four.
Twice in one meeting, hell with you.
So on behalf of council, Jim, a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And many more. The Controller?
Thank you, Mr. President. The pension boards have been doing well. I don't have an accurate report until next week, when there's an aggregate board meeting, which is Tuesday, so at the next meeting, I'll be able to present those numbers. But they've been definitely improving with the way the market's been going, so I will have good news to report back to you.
Thank you. Administration, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to announce that fire applications are open this week. You can stop in on the third floor in the Human Resources Office and pick up an application. Then you do need to be turned in or postmarked by Friday, December 12th, along with a $50 check. That covers the cost of actually administering the tests through the Civil Service Board. But applications are open, and we strongly urge folks in the community to take the test and to be part of the Erie community to make us even stronger. Congratulations to Strong Vincent and Villa Marie Academy basketball teams, the coaches, the administration, the parents, the families. It's a testament to our community to take these kids so far and to represent Erie across the state in Hershey. Pennsylvania Municipal League is coming to Erie in October 5th to the 7th. I know it seems a little far out, but we are planning sponsorship opportunities, and mailings will be going out to business leaders and industries in the Erie community, and we really hope to showcase everything that Erie has to offer to elected officials and municipal leaders from across the state who'll be gathering here in the fall. We have a lovely dinner planned at the Maritime Museum. Hopefully, that contract will come through, and we'll get it signed and get our date pinned down, but it's going to be a lovely event. They did move it to the fall this year, and we're looking forward to entertaining the Commonwealth. Last but not least, Election Day is Tuesday, May 16th. Polls open at 7:00 AM. It's very important for this community, for the city of Erie, for Erie County, that you get out and vote. Marison will be having the trolley going around to a lot of the high-rise senior living centers, getting those folks to the polls. It's very, very important for this community, so good luck to everyone, and thank you.
And Joe, I would say I would encourage all the veterans out there to apply for the fire test.
Absolutely.
For all my fellow veterans, this is a golden opportunity, especially those who've served in the Navy who do have firefighting skills. And finally, Mr. Conciliore, would you like to speak?
No.
There you go.
No, no reward.
With that, we adjourn the meeting.
City Council adjourns at 11:15. Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Winarsky.